Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to invite Tuhan, Assistant Superintendent of Facilities, to the podium for the custodial service recognition.
Good evening, everybody. I am so excited to be here tonight because we have an opportunity to recognize some super special people who do such impactful work in our schools. So, as you know, we have facilities under our umbrella here. And Jim Powers is our Director of Environmental Health, Safety, and Code Compliance. With him is Patrick Darville, our Custodial Services Supervisor, and DeMarcus Simmons, who is our Custodial Services Coordinator. And these folks do a really, really good job of working with our schools and helping them to become the awesome folks they are in terms of the custodial services that they provide to our students, to our families, to our teachers, to our school buildings. It is really amazing. And hopefully, as you were looking around our schools first day of school, you could see some of their really cool work. Been a couple of schools where the floors were so shiny that it was just... I was just so proud to see the results of everyone's work in making sure that our schools were ready for our students. So, we do a couple of things every year. One is, twice a year, we do custodial assessments. So, Mr. Simmons and his team, they go out to all of our schools twice a year. They review the custodial work in the building, check for all sorts of different things, and everybody gets a score. And then, we repeat that activity again in the spring, and everyone gets another score. And we have sort of a different grading scale in custodial services. So, anything less than 90 is just not enough, right? So, we have really, really strong custodial standards here in our schools, and our schools comply with those custodial standards. So, across the board, we have super successful custodial teams in our schools. And I'm super confident in the work that they do and the services that they deliver. So, literally, every one of our schools is a success from a custodial point of view. But, we do have three schools here tonight that we wanted to recognize because they scored the highest among their peer group in elementary, middle, and high school. And we're awarding them the George Bishop Award for Excellence in Custodial Services, named after a gentleman who started as a head custodian in Cocoa Beach in the 1990s. And he was someone who kind of led the evolution of custodial practices here at Brevard Public Schools. And it's an honor to recognize his memory in providing these awards to folks who have really excelled. And then, I also wanted to just take a moment and thank our team and facilities because they do such a great job with head custodian training every year. We have Custodial Olympics, and our teams compete against one another. It's super fun and super good learning, and I've used that word way too many times, but it just is a really, really great experience. And we network very well. Our teams work together. Our schools share resources at the district level. We are privileged to have a custodial strike team that helps support our schools that need help. So, we really are focused on making sure that our custodial services are an absolute success. So, I am honored this evening to recognize three schools. And I'm going to name the schools and our recipients. We're going to do pictures after all of the recognitions tonight. But I do want to provide... Ask Jim and DeMarcus and Patrick to come up and provide our plaques to our award winners. So, tonight, we are proud to recognize Columbia Elementary School. And here to receive the award tonight, we have Principal Jennifer Julian and Selena Burgess, who is a Master Certified Head Custodian. And this is a big deal, so you'll hear me say that a lot, "Master Certified," certified. Our folks are very highly trained and credentialed, so they do a super job in our schools. So, next, I want to recognize Stone Middle School. So, representing Stone Middle School, we have Lauren Ferrante, our principal, Amanda Lovett, Master Certified Head Custodian, Amelia Correll, our custodian, Bruce Simonette, Certified Custodian, Joyce Schoust, Certified Custodian, Haralyn Roque, Custodian, Maria Sloan, Custodian, and Juanita Cinco, Custodian. Thank you to the seat from Stone. And then, in our high school category, we're proud to recognize West Shore Junior/Senior High School. Attending tonight is Bert Clark, our principal, Glenn Webb, Assistant Principal, Sarah Perry, Assistant Principal, Sophia Brown, Master Certified Head Custodian, Elizabeth Berkeley, Custodian, Mercedes Felix de Meheya, Custodian, Derek Hamilton, Custodian, Kurt Laser, Custodian, Paul Michaels, Certified Custodian, and Azalea Perez Morales, Custodian. Congratulations to the West Shore team. So, I just want to say, you all have done an excellent job being role models for your partners out in the district, and just really appreciate the work that you do keeping our schools safe and clean for our students. Just, it's really good and important work. You all are a big part of the reason that we are an A District here in Brevard Public Schools. So, thank you all. Please have a seat, stay around for a picture. And thank you.
If you guys could return to your seats, we'll do some pictures in just a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We are now at the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell, would you read what is on the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agenda, we have Administrative Staff Recommendations, 23 Consent Items, two public hearing items, no action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the following. Revised for C1, Administrative Staff Recommendations, F12, Terminations of Instructional Employees. Added was F1, the 25-26 Memorandum of Understanding with Municipalities for School Resource Officers. I'm also requesting that we remove Item G2, which was a public hearing, public hearing number two, on the invocation policy. Mr. Thomas has asked that we table this item. So, the agenda as presented with removal of G2.
Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
We are now at the Administrative Staff Recommendations. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, by your action tonight and your action two weeks ago, we have some people to celebrate. So, the first one we're going to call up is Dr. Jeanette Connor, who is now the principal of Space Coast Junior/Senior High School for two weeks now. Congratulations. Come on up.
Thank you so much. I would like to begin by thanking Dr. Rendell and the board for the incredible opportunity to lead Space Coast Junior/Senior High School. I would also like to extend a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Raymer, Mrs. Harris, Mrs. Weibel, and Ms. Vega. Your belief and confidence in me means the world. Thank you to Mr. Pruitt, Director of Leadership Development. Mr. Pruitt's guidance throughout the Level 2 Preparing New Principal Program has been invaluable. Thank you to my mentor principal from West Shore Junior/Senior High, Mr. Bert Clark, for all of the calls and texts and data-driven support throughout completing my Level 2 program. To my APC friends, I would not have survived the AP Curriculum role without your group text. Your support, no matter the time of day throughout the past three years, is something that I'll forever be thankful for. This evening, I am blessed to have some special people that are here in the crowd. And I would like to thank Mr. Solomon, former principal of O'Gally High School, and his family for their unwavering support. Mr. Solomon provided me with my first BPS position as a community cheer coach, and then later hired me as a teacher and eventually a school counselor. Mr. Solomon encouraged me from a young age to pursue educational leadership, and his belief in me is the reason I'm in this position today. Also, thank you to Ms. Price, Brevard Virtual School Principal. It's hard to believe that I was your cheerleader and economics and U.S. history student turned principal. Your support over the years has meant more than you know. Thank you to my family for always supporting my dreams and aspirations. And finally, thank you to Mrs. Gonzalez, Principal of Titusville High School. I am so proud of the milestones that we accomplished in my time as your AP of Curriculum. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to lead alongside of you. I have loved every minute of my time as a terrier, and I look forward to seeing all that my terrier family will accomplish this year and beyond. And to my new Viper family, which some of them are in the crowd somewhere tonight, I cannot think... I cannot wait to see what we accomplish in this next chapter. I could not be prouder to lead Viper Nation as your new principal. Thank you.
So, next, I'd like to recognize Danielle Polley for her promotion to officially principal at Gardendale Separate Day School. Congratulations.
So, I wanted to start by saying thank you to my family, who have been always giving their support, dropping everything when I need, the kids picked up because I'm still at school, and always being there for me. Thank you to all the educators I've worked with over the years, teachers, administrators, support staff. If it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't be where I am now. Thank you to the board and Dr. Rendell for giving me this opportunity to be at such an amazing school. And to my Gardendale family that I know we are continuing to grow, and I am so proud of where we've come in the past three years, and looking forward to continuing to rise with you. Thank you.
So, next, I'd like to call up Martha McFarland. She's being promoted from one position at Vera High School to another, from 10-month Assistant Principal to 12-month Assistant Principal. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Rendell and distinguished guests. I would like to start by saying how grateful I am for this opportunity and for the trust that has been placed in me. This promotion just isn't about my work. It's about a reflection of the support, the mentorship, and the teamwork that I have been fortunate to be surrounded with. To my colleagues, my Vera colleagues, my Hawks, and Principal Agate, I wanted to say thank you for challenging me. Thank you for inspiring me and making every day a chance to grow. To the district leadership, thank you for seeing my potential and for giving me this opportunity to grow at the next level. And to my boys and my family, just thank you for everything. Without you guys, I wouldn't be here. So, I'm excited to take on this responsibility, and I'm excited to see where we can take our school to the next level. And of course, go Hawks!
So, and finally, we want to congratulate Kristy Shorts on her promotion to Assistant Principal at Endeavor Elementary School. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm truly honored to accept the role of Assistant Principal at Endeavor Elementary. I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude to our superintendent, Dr. Rendell, our board, our director, Mr. Reed, and my very proud Panther principal, Ms. Murphy, for entrusting me with this position. Being part of the Endeavor team is a privilege. Our school is filled with passionate educators and absolutely incredible students. I'm excited to continue working alongside all of you to support our mission and help every child thrive. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm very proud to serve Endeavor Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could now take a break for some pictures?
Sure, let's break. All right, we are now at the public comment portion of the meeting. We have 29 speakers, and each will receive three minutes. Our attorney will call the speakers in order in which they signed up to speak. A warning to those in attendance, if you cause a disruption, you will be asked to leave the premise. If you continue to cause a disruption and/or fail to leave the premise, you will be in violation of Florida State Statute 877-13, and will be comminied trespass, and the board will enforce these rules. Mr. Gibbs, please call the first three speakers.
Anthony Calucci, Andrew Spar, Vanessa Skipper.
My name is Anthony Calucci, and I'm the President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I want to address Item F9, Instructional Staff Recommendations, 73 Appointments and 29 Reappointments. I imagine many of these teachers attended New Teacher Academy, where the guest speaker you brought in was a convicted felon, supposed to serve 65 years in federal prison and still on probation. It sure seems a district willing to do that believes in second chances for teachers. Then, Mr. Susan told them, "Teachers shouldn't worry about making mistakes and should ask for forgiveness rather than permission." Once again, it sure seems a board member who says this believes in second chances for teachers. This board recently gave a principal a third chance after wreaking havoc on two schools for nearly a decade. A principal who wasn't even having students recite the Pledge of Allegiance, a clear violation of state law. You gave Dr. Rendell a second chance to be superintendent here after being ousted from Indian River County for questionable decisions. And when he was a principal at Cocoa Beach, he willfully violated a district directive on hiring a coach. I told you that he had ruined his relationship with teachers in the last two districts, but you hired him anyway because, once again, you believe in second and third chances. But here's the truth. In Brevard, accountability is only for teachers. Others get second and third chances. We don't. One name is missing from tonight's agenda that proves it. Melissa Calhoun, a teacher with nearly flawless evaluations for 12 years. Her name should be listed for rehire at Satellite High School. It isn't because this board is choosing politics over kids. Melissa made a mistake and corrected it immediately. The state sanctioned her with probation, yet you are suspending her. Let's be honest. Everyone knows this student was a senior who had been going by this name for years. Ms. Calhoun's only misstep was not looking up the form in focus. If the superintendent or anyone claims it was more, they either don't know the facts or are lying. There's an unfilled language arts position at her school right now, and you're leaving it vacant rather than hiring a teacher with a decade of highly effective evaluations. If you won't bring her back, own it. Own that you put politics over kids. And know this, your decision sends a chilling message to every teacher. Parent politics trump student achievement. If a parent has an issue at home, they can blame the teacher, complain to a board member, right, Mr. Susan? And the teacher will be gone, no matter the record, the facts, or recommendation of a third party. Second chances are for everyone except teachers. That's long if everyone never wants.
Andrew Spar. Andrew Spar, Vanessa Skipper, Christopher Higginbottom.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Rendell, members of the public. I am Andrew Spar, an elementary music teacher and president of the Florida Education Association. I'm here to speak on Item F9, Instructional Staff Appointments. You know, this is a great time of year. You were just celebrating it. My own daughter, who's in 11th grade in Volusia County, just started school yesterday as well. This is a time of year when students get to meet their teachers. They get to see the teachers they had in prior years. And it is an exciting time where we should be celebrating all that is ahead. But unfortunately, I want to talk for a moment about someone who is not on this agenda and should be for reappointment, and that is Mrs. Calhoun. I'm wearing a button that says "Hate Has No Place." It's from the ADL, but the reality of it is hate has no place in our public schools. It should have no place in our community. We, as teachers, come into this profession because we care about kids. We want the best for every student. We want them to come into a classroom where they are seen, where they are loved, where they are supported, and where they get the education they deserve. I believe each and every one of you believe that as well, which baffles me as to why you decided to make a political decision rather than a decision that is best for students. I've watched the goalpost from afar move here. At first, it was, "We want to go through the investigatory process." Then, it was, "We want to see what the state does." And with the state unanimously said, "We are not going to take Ms. Calhoun's certificate. We are not going to suspend her certificate." You said, "If they did that, you would bring her back." And now, the goalpost has moved again. Mrs. Calhoun has the right, has the qualifications, and more importantly, or most importantly, has the passion to teach in a county where she graduated. Yet, the decision has been made to choose political motivation over students' need and purposefully misrepresent the facts in doing so. Ms. Calhoun should be on this agenda. Ms. Calhoun should be in the classroom. There is a vacancy at Satellite Beach High School that Ms. Calhoun should be in. And I would urge you to do the right thing and put students over politics. Thank you.
Vanessa Skipper, Christopher Higginbottom, Bill Pearlman.
Good evening, Dr. Rendell, members of the school board. My name is Vanessa Skipper, and I proudly serve the educators of Brevard County as Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I stand before you to address a glaring omission from the Instructional Staff Recommendations F9. Teachers across the county will tell you that I often say I stand on the shoulders of giants, those who came before me in this union representing educators, negotiating contracts, and standing in solidarity. One of those giants, former BFT Fran Baer, shared this powerful reflection on the unjust treatment of Melissa Calhoun, who should be on the agenda tonight. With this decision comes a threat to every teacher. According to the superintendent's comment, "Parents' support trump student achievement and teaching excellence." A parent has a problem with a kid at home, blames it on the teacher, complains to a board member, and the teacher is gone despite of the recommended action from an authorized third party. If a principal wants to improve their school's test scores and hire a competent, qualified teacher, is school-based management an empty policy? Where there is a violation of policy, procedure, or law, a consequence may be appropriate. But due process and just cause demand a reasonable consequence. Is banning a highly effective educator like Ms. Calhoun from teaching again a reasonable penalty? Absolutely not. Dr. Rendell, this decision has done more to erode the trust and confidence of your teaching staff around the district more than you realize. You issued a letter of reprimand, a reasonable response, but then you chose to non-renew her contract. At the same time, you allowed her to continue teaching through the rest of the school year with the same student still in her classroom. Then, after the Florida Education Practices Commission, a third-party panel unanimously voted to let her keep her teaching certificate. You still refused to rehire her. This is speaking out of both sides of your mouth. Even more troubling is the inconsistency in your standard of redemption. You've invited a keynote speaker who is a convicted felon, still on probation for organized burglary, to fund a meth addiction to address both students and new teachers about transformation and second chances. Yet, you refuse to extend even a fraction of that grace to Ms. Calhoun, a dedicated professional with a record of excellence. Your teachers are watching, including all those new hires you brought in for the New Teacher Academy. To the school board, you have the authority to direct the school superintendent. You also have the chance to do the reasonable thing here. Direct him to rehire Ms. Calhoun. Mr. Thomas, thank you for standing up for just cause and reasonable penalty. Ms. Campbell, you said, "There is no reason why, depending on their decision, Ms. Calhoun wouldn't necessarily go back and apply for a job in Brevard, and those doors are open." Now is the time to stand by that statement. Ms. Wright, Mr. Susan, Mr. Trent, you also have the opportunity to do the right thing. The teachers and the larger community, many of whom who can put politics aside, are watching.
Christopher Higginbottom, Bill Pearlman, Jennifer Nagy.
Hello, my name's Coach Higginbottom, and I'm going to speak about G1. I just want to take a moment to say thank you, guys, for the board, for... If no one else says thank you, I know you guys got a big task ahead of you, and your shoulders are broad, and that's basically what I want to talk about today. I know the speaker they're speaking about with Dr. Rendell and... Just so everybody knows, that is a nationally renowned speaker, and he talks about transformation. Most of the colleges he goes and speaks to. So, as I went to FIT as a member of this school board, employee of the school board, I appreciated the speaker we had there. Dr. Rendell, I'm the one who texted you. Thank you for your motivation. That was my cellphone. With that being said, G1, it is about cell phones. I know that's a big topic, especially as a school year starts. And I just want to say, I hope you guys can stay strong on the district's cellphone policy. In this age of constant digital distractions, our schools must remain a place of focus, encouragement, and genuine learning. Research shows that unrestricted cellphone use in the classroom harms academic performance, increases anxiety, and disrupts the learning environment. And I hope you guys can let the administration enforce the cellphone policy. I know there's going to be a lot of pressure there. By maintaining clear boundaries, you protect instructional time, encourage social interaction, and reduce the distractions and cyber risk. So, I'm going to urge you, some may urge you to have more flexibility, but strong policies create strong structure, and strong structure leads to success. Teachers, parents, and even most students appreciate this new cellphone policy. I know it's state law, K through eighth, but this board going all the way to high school, I think, is the right move in the right direction. I'm a father of three. All three kids do go to Brevard Public Schools. Brevard County has always prioritized student achievement and well-being. So, I encourage you to stay firm in this policy and uphold this policy because our students deserve a school environment where learning comes first, and that's what this policy will bring. With that being said, I just want to take a second to congratulate all the administrators that were appointed. I think that's a great thing. And we are doing great things in this school thanks to this board and what they are doing. I'll just give the rest of my time. Thank you.
Bill Pearlman, Jennifer Nagy, Samantha Kirven.
Good evening, I'm Bill Pearlman. Tonight, you are approving revisions to Policy 5517.01 regarding bullying and harassment. But the superintendent and this board have shown no commitment to a workplace that is safe, secure, and free from bullying and harassment. Previously, some of you stated the reason you did not renew Ms. Calhoun's contract because you were concerned the state might rescind her teaching license. You looked us in the eye. You said you'd reconsider Ms. Calhoun's reinstatement if the state cleared her to teach. The state cleared her to teach, and now you've broken your word. Consider how the community feels about being lied to. This is political, it is dishonest, and it's harassment. There are at least four factors that demonstrate you are in violation of your own bullying and harassment policy. You've inflicted psychological distress on Ms. Calhoun. You've created an intimidating, hostile, and offensive educational environment. You've caused discomfort and humiliation. And you have unreasonably interfered with Ms. Calhoun's ability to participate. This is not about parental rights, even though you like to pretend that it is. The parent who complained knew what was happening, presumably for years, because the student was using their preferred name for years. After the school administration spoke with Ms. Calhoun, she had a conversation with the student and told them that going forward, they would be called by their legal name. It could have ended there. It should have ended there. This is ideological extremism and abuse of power. In addition to lying to us by refusing to reinstate Ms. Calhoun, you're going against the recommendation of the Education Practices Commission and your own HR department. Dr. Rendell prefers retaliation over kindness and empathy, politics over the interests of students. Is that the culture you want for Brevard schools? If you let the superintendent stay on this path of retaliation, it becomes your path. So please, make a motion tonight. Instruct the superintendent to allow Melissa Calhoun to continue outstanding service to Brevard students and help pave the path for kindness, empathy, academic excellence, second chances. Not ideological extremism, retaliation, political theater. Brevard deserves better.
Jennifer Nagy, Samantha Kirven, Kelly Kirven.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Nagy. I'm an Edgewood mom. I've met most of you board members at Edgewood events or just around the district at other events. Mr. Susan is actually my district representative and has worked with me over the years on a number of things. Back when my boys were little in Boy Scouts, he even met with them... It was during COVID, you did a Zoom telecom thing with them, and the boys were so excited because you ended up asking them questions. And they... I don't even remember if it was about water fountains or playground recess time or something. You asked them something, and they got to give you feedback. And they were so excited because you were like, "I don't know. Let's call..." At that time, it was Dr. Mullins. "And let's call and ask him." And you called him up, and their eyes got the size of half dollars because you were calling and actually taking action on something they'd said. And they felt like they were bigger than life. And you and I had talked earlier today about the wireless communications devices, and you said you were going to talk to your fellow board members because we had talked about there was a... What I saw as a potential oversight, that we really need staff members to be able to approve if there are educational purposes that they would like to be able to use wireless communication devices, that being outside laptops, or cellphones, or whatever purposes need those devices to be used. And that that is currently not in your... I don't want to call it law or whatever policy is going on. And I'm hoping that you all had a chance to discuss that before tonight's vote and that you do make those policy changes because staff members need to have that discretion. And one of the things you said to me earlier on the phone, and I'm hoping that you can reiterate this from the dais tonight, is that staff members aren't going to lose their pensions because you and I had had a conversation about that, that there were staff members that were truly concerned that they were going to lose their pensions if a student, like, had to use a cellphone because in AP Physics, for example, you have to film as part of the AP Physics curriculum in slow motion. That's something you can't do on a district-provided laptop. So, yes, a cellphone can actually do that. So either the school district can go out and spend additional funds to purchase antiquated technology, or we could simply allow a cellphone to shoot this little video to be able to be used for the AP curriculum. These are like the little things that I'm hoping teachers can use because right now the teachers are worried that they're not going to be able to use this, and they might lose their jobs over it. And I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Samantha Kirven, Kelly Kirven, and Melissa Calhoun. Samantha Kirven, Kelly Kirven, Melissa Calhoun.
Hello, it has been a while since I've seen you guys, but I am not happy to be back. So, this is about G1, the... What is that again? WCD policy. I think that you guys should either remove it or revise it heavily. Better to just remove it for high school. We are high schoolers, not middle schoolers. We can drive, we can do all of that, but we can't use our cellphones, not even during lunch, to communicate with each other or anything of the such. Anyways, you are not properly setting up these kids for adulthood, which is your job. Your job is to make a curriculum that can support and push high schoolers to being a fully functional adult. And by limiting cellphone uses or any kind of device, wireless communication device, is hindering that. Because regardless of what you think or what you want, technology is always going to be a part of life. That's the future. You can't deny it, you should embrace it. Teaching kids how to properly go through the internet in an educational manner is what you should be doing, not limiting it and making it to where people can get fired for their jobs for prioritizing using a device because they never got to learn how to properly regulate device use in a school where school doesn't have that kind of real-world consequences. People could lose their livelihood because they do not know how to self-regulate phone use or social media or any of that because they didn't learn that in school. It has always been, a phone is always a temptation. That's the reality. But in school, at least, you'd be able to learn the consequences of prioritizing your phone instead of your school by getting a bad grade or failing a class, not losing your income, your job, not flunking college. College is expensive. People could waste their scholarships because now they have freedom, and they do not know how to regulate. It is a problem, and it will be a problem, and even more so if you keep this policy. It should be up to the teacher. And the state law states that it's K through 8, not K through 12. Thank you and good night.
To echo her sentiments, I'd also rather be home. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about G1, the wireless communication devices. First, I understand that the new legislation under DeSantis ties the board's hands in terms of K to 8, although that does exclude our junior/senior schools. Instead, I'll be talking about what this policy does in our high schools. While I agree that cellphones should not be used in classrooms without teachers' permission, the policy change does not just affect cellphones. Instead, it includes all technology devices, including personal computers, iPads, and Kindles. First, the purpose of school is to prepare our students for the future, and this policy does the opposite. Whether our students head off to college, the military, or the workforce, technology will be part of their day-to-day life, and teaching them to use it appropriately should be a standard. I guess I should be excited to see this district invest money into textbooks for every student so they can do their homework or study during lunch, but we both know you can't afford to do that. And with students being unable to use their devices, they're being denied access to their education. Titusville High School, as an example, keeps dual enrollment students on campus on days they don't go to Eastern Florida, and they just sit there doing what exactly? They're not in a classroom with a computer cart, but they also can't use their personal computers to do their college work either. It's like the board forgets that virtually all curriculum is digital these days. And despite popular belief, you do not issue a laptop for each student, and the laptops you do have aren't powerful enough to run all of the software our students use, especially for my daughter in digital art. Next, this policy unfairly discriminates against our population with disabilities. And before you say, quote, "While we have IEPs and 504 exceptions," let me give you an example of what that doesn't cover. During lunch, students have the ability to pull out a book and read, but Samantha doesn't have that option. For books to be accessible, she needs them to be able to listen in audio format, which is now banned, or she needs to use an e-reader where she can manipulate the font, size, and brightness, but that is banned too. In a classroom where it is part of the curriculum, she can use her IEP, but at lunch, when she's reading for pleasure, that wouldn't be covered under an IEP. That is blatant discrimination. And this is ignoring the fact that students with IEPs and 504s already have to unfairly out themselves as being different, which heightens their risk of being bullied and experiencing anxiety. At West Shore, students hold the majority of their clubs and activities during lunch, or what they call "Power Hour." One of Samantha's clubs uses an online app that school computers can't even support if they had access to them. And unless the school board plans on buying their books and maps, which start at about $50 each, their club may not even be able to continue. And they're not alone. Stop calling this a ban on cellphones because it's not. It's a ban on education accessibility and just proves how far removed the majority of you are from the realities of what our high schoolers are dealing with. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Dr. Rendell, and Members of the community. My name is Melissa Calhoun, and I'm here to address Item 9, Instructional Staff Recommendations. I'm here before you tonight as a speech and debate coach, a mock trial coach, Beta Club sponsor, First Priority sponsor, and peer mentor, as well as a BPS parent, and yes, a highly effective BPS instructor. It's my hope that tonight I can offer a sound reflection on the practice of education to both you and the 73 newly-appointed teachers. Credibility matters. According to John Hattie, teacher credibility has an effect size of 0.9. In other words, it has a significant positive impact on student achievement. In the book Visible Learning for Literacy, it says the following about teacher credibility. Teachers can compromise their credibility when they violate trust, make a lot of errors, sit in the back of the room, and lack a sense of urgency. They compromise their credibility, particularly if they are not seen to be fair. Now, teacher credibility doesn't happen in a vacuum. It flourishes only in systems where leadership values protects and uplifts the profession. If we want these 73 newly-appointed educators to become teachers of high impact, then they must be treated as professionals. That responsibility begins not in the classroom, but here at the district level. You set the tone, you shape the culture. We cannot build high-impact classrooms if our teachers fear that they too can be sacrificed on the altar of political ideology. We cannot promote excellence if we silence experience. So for these 73 teachers, I ask you to commit to transparency, commit to professionalism, and commit to protecting our teachers. You can begin this process by hosting a town hall. This would allow teachers, students, and parents to come together to speak openly and respectfully about the issues that plague our current system. It's a small step in repairing the trust with your veteran teachers. When those teachers feel safe, they are empowered to be marigold teachers and mentors to the 73 newly-appointed instructors, as I was for our Emerging Teacher of the Year. Because ultimately, when teachers thrive, students succeed. And when leadership leads with integrity, credibility follows. Thank you.
It's kind of nice following Melissa. The podium's at the right height. I love public education, and I'm particular public educators. I'm speaking to Item 9. My grandmother taught public schools in Mississippi until the state shut down public schools rather than grant all students an equal education by desegregating them. She then taught in the only schools available to her, private schools. But she instilled a love of public education that has never left me. I know your political party creates outrage for theater. I promise you, I stand as a member of the Democratic National Committee because of my outrage at antics like yours. I don't have to create a thing. Mr. Rendell, everyone saw your initial statement echoed by Megan Wright that the only reason you are not renewing Melissa Calhoun's contract at the end of the school year was because her certificate might be up for review and might be pulled. Katie Campbell even gave a saccharin-laden smirk, saying she can definitely reapply if her certificate is left intact. It was reviewed, and it was not canceled, and you were big mad. So you moved the goalpost, denying our county a highly effective teacher because of your politics. Your statement was honestly the most ridiculous piece of theater ever. Your own investigation belies just about every word. In your statement, you said that Calhoun knowingly and repeatedly participated in gender reaffirmation without the parent's knowledge. Yet, your own investigation showed that the very moment that it was brought to Calhoun's attention, that the name she was commonly used for a student was not, in fact, on some ridiculous permission form, she stopped using it and notified the student she would no longer use the preferred, non-gendered name. Unless you are prepared to fire every coach and teacher who actually does repeatedly and intentionally use any name not on their student permission slip, you must reinstate Calhoun. The rule does not specify gender-affirming names. It says any names not on the form. Lord, how much of our taxpotters do you insist on spending defending lawsuits that you could avoid? You brag about standing firmly on the side of parental rights. We all know you only stand firmly on the side of parents on the right. Gene publicly stated that Brevard is a conservative district, and non-conservative parents should take their students elsewhere. Last meeting, he thought it would be cute to wear a cheap knockoff of a MAGA slogan on his damn head. Just stop politicizing our schools. Look at the slogan behind you. Your commitment is to serve every student with excellence as the standard. It doesn't mention parents. I can't even think of the last time you mentioned what was best for students. Instead, you say you prioritize the law. You know, anybody here remember 1970? I do. It was the law that public schools in Florida remained segregated in 1970. Brevard didn't desegregate until August of 1970. We have in an elementary school, Special B Holland, named after one of the staunchest defenders of parental rights in keeping schools segregated. I'll just bet that school board was as determined to prioritize the law, the trust of their families, and the rights of their parents to remain segregated too.
Hello there, School Board. I'm Kai Snyder from Valora Middle School, and I'm here to talk about 5136, the wireless ban. You say it's about phones, but it does not... It includes other devices like Apple Watches, Kindles, and these devices are very helpful for students. I am someone who is dyslexic, and the Kindle allows me to adjust the font so I'm able to read better and understand what I need to continue with my classes. Then, also, the idea that phones are distracting is true. But the problem with banning phones is there will always be games. Even if they aren't playing games on the phones, they will always be playing the games on the computers. They will still be there. Then, cyberbullying is a big problem, but also... Then, cyberbullying is a big problem, but also getting rid of the phones does not really solve the problem. It just postpones the problem to either be happened in person or to when they get home. Then, my school used to have early announcements where students would film themselves and talk about the announcements. They're unable to do that now because they are not able to use their phones. The phones also allow them to use apps like Focus to get to their classes on time, know what homework and class period they need to get to next. Thank you.
Jennifer Hopkins, Rochelle Jolly, Susan Pinsky.
Good evening. My name is Jen. I'm a longtime resident of Brevard County and a graduate of Brevard County Schools. I'm here to speak to Agenda Item G, Public Hearing. The purpose of these policies is to ensure transparency, accountability for the Board, and participation from the community. The expectation of transparency is that information regarding budgets, agendas, and policies is made easily accessible and comprehensible to everyone. I do not believe that this Board has succeeded in meeting this expectation. For example, you've been unwilling to share details regarding the budget. You have dismissed comments that don't align with your narrative as being uninformed without providing the information. Another example of the lack of transparency is the hot firing of Melissa Calhoun. This Board clearly stated more than once that if her license was upheld by the state, she would be welcome to reapply, and her reinstatement would be considered. Based on Dr. Rendell's statement after her settlement was reached, it's clear that this Board never had the intention of doing this. You are dishonest. You misled Ms. Calhoun and all of the students that she should be teaching. Her story is national news, so you misled the whole country. This Board must be willing to accept accountability for the decisions that you make. You should be learning from your mistakes, welcoming scrutiny, and following through on your commitments. You have failed to do all of this, and you have broken any trust that this community had in you. You must understand that the students and the teachers determine when you've made a mistake. It's not up to you, and honestly, it's not supposed to be up to the parents or the community either. We're here to help you, help, I'm sorry, we're here to help hold you accountable to them. It is very difficult for the students, teachers, and community to participate in the decision-making process. The protocol for these meetings is relegated public comment to an incredibly narrow focus. There's no actual discussion, no room for questions. We don't want to come in here and just complain in your direction while you dismiss us. We don't want an adversarial relationship. We want collaboration, and frankly, we want better decision-making. We're making two specific requests this evening. First, reinstate Melissa Calhoun immediately. Show the teachers and the students that you make decisions with integrity. Second, host an impartial town hall. This Board shouldn't shy away from answering questions from the community. Fulfilling these requests will begin to rebuild trust. Thank you.
Rochelle Jolly, Susan Pinsky, Ava Gallo.
Good evening. Rochelle Jolly, longtime Brevard resident, mom of many, like too many. I'm going to speak to the instructional recommendations. Instructional recommendations are an important part of your job. Choosing teachers who will teach our children to pass the Almighty Fast Test so that our schools can receive funding, or passing the AP courses so they can receive college credit, are supposed signs of a successful teacher. Why then are you not recommending a teacher who has done just that? Dr. Marky is saying it's because there was a conscious and deliberate decision to engage with gender affirmation without parental knowledge. Megs, did you know that he said this? Did you know that names have gender? Jeannie, I'm sure you recognize the flaw in this logic. Kat, Johnny, I pose a couple of questions. What do names mean? In one way or another, each of you have made it clear that you align yourselves with Christianity. Here's another question. Which of the names in the Scriptures do you like to use when you refer to our Lord and Savior? Is it wonderful, almighty, master, teacher, shiloh, everlasting father, counselor, advocate, anointed, creator, deliverer, bread of life, judge, the light, the way, mediator, messenger, Messiah, Emmanuel, redeemer, rock, son of God, only begotten, comforter, friend, cornerstone, Alpha and Omega, Holy One of Israel, comforter, King of kings, King of the Jews, King of heaven, Son of man, good shepherd, exemplar, Jehovah, Prince of peace, the Lamb of God, the truth, Savior, Christ, Jesus. These are just a few of the names that refer to our Lord and Savior found in the Scriptures. The majority of these names do not use to describe Jesus are gender-neutral. Names do not have a gender, so your accusation toward Ms. Calhoun is false. As a Christian myself, none of these names changes who and what Jesus is to me. So this rule of parental permission for a name is just a weapon you have used to punish a teacher and students, to push your extremist agenda, not to mention that you broke your word, and that you would reinstate Ms. Calhoun if she kept her teaching license. You should review this decision to not have Ms. Calhoun, to have Ms. Calhoun on the list of recommended instructors. BPS deserves teachers and a proven track record of success.
Susan Pinsky, Ava Gallo, Julia Cohen.
Thank you, Board, Superintendent, Board members, and members of the community for this opportunity to address you tonight. I am here to speak about Agenda Item 8, Instructional Recommendations. Today, I ask to speak to your heart. I've tried to speak to your heads, and I hear all these incredible speeches that are also trying to appeal to your intellect and reason. But today, I stand here as a mom, a proud and passionate mom who values my children's education as the second most important part of their lives besides their family. School is where the groundwork is laid, their foundation is established, and behaviors are printed upon them. These vital experiences define them and help guide them to become, hopefully, extraordinary contributors to our future. Trust me, you will need them as you age. We all will. I am a doctor by day and care deeply for my patients, whatever side of the political spectrum they live on, however they come to me. Much like teachers, my job is to provide exceptional care always, not negotiable. I am here tonight because I cannot stand by quietly as you take steps to keep an extraordinary educator from teaching my child in addition to disrupting her career. She is one of the best, Mrs. Melissa Calhoun. I ask, as I speak, to pause and listen to your heart and internal voice for a moment. Take a moment and recall your best teacher and some indelible mark they left. Pause and take a moment, as a parent, when a teacher touched your life or the life of your child in a remarkable way. I am in awe in this room, because some of those incredible teachers are behind me, and I have to stand up and speak out. Pause and feel the pain of my child whose heart is broken, for my child who will not have Mrs. Calhoun in her senior year, her extraordinary presence as a teacher and inspiring coach. Please pause and feel that remarkable loss. Now multiply that loss by hundreds of students you are depriving of this phenomenal educator. For what endpoint? One angry parent, one rule or law broken without clear parameters? Think of the role modeling you are at this point demonstrating. Please pause. I wear this necklace as I do sometimes. These are portraits my kids made in art school from an art teacher that changed their lives, who impacts them every day. I'm holding this and begging for you to hear my heart.
Thank you so much for your time.
Ava Gallo, Julia Cohen, Gregory Ross.
Good evening. My name is Ava Gallo, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item G1. I'm a junior at Satellite High School and also a dual enrollment student at Eastern Florida State College. I'm here tonight to share why I believe it's important for students, especially those in advanced learning programs or with learning differences, to have access to their own personal devices, specifically tablets and computers during the school day. Why personal devices matter? In today's world, having your own device is not just a luxury. It's essential for academic success and preparation for the future. Personally, I rely on my iPad with a keyboard and Apple pencil to take notes, complete assignments, and conduct research. I have ADHD and dyslexia, so digital note-taking for me is critical, both at Eastern and Satellite. It helps me to organize my thoughts, use accessibility tools, and keep pace with my coursework in a way that a pen or paper simply cannot. There are also some scheduling challenges that come along with banning personal devices. I travel directly between Eastern Florida State College and Satellite High School Monday through Thursday. For me and other students in similar situations, it's impractical and sometimes impossible to drop off devices at home during the day. My schedule often requires for me to work on assignments and research in multiple locations, not just the classroom. I also want to touch on the importance of personal devices in science research. I'm heavily involved in my school's science research program, which means I use my device before school, after school, on weekends, and at home. My research logbook has to be digital because handwriting is a challenge for me. School-issue computers cannot be taken home, which makes them impossible for my research needs. Next, the compatibility issues. Many of the tools that helped me to be successful, considering my learning struggles, are Apple-based, but school devices are Microsoft-based. This creates compatibility problems that slow down my work and make collaboration harder. I understand and support the new phone policies about no phones in class besides no phones at lunch. I also understand concerns about students using hotspots, but without phone access during the day, this concern is already addressed. For students like me in dual enrollment, science research, or with learning differences, personal devices such as tablets and computers are not distractions; they are lifelines to our education. I respectfully ask the Board to reconsider the restrictions on personal laptops and computers, I mean, sorry, laptops and tablets for students in these situations. I would be happy to discuss more about my experiences and work together to find solutions that meet both student needs and school goals. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Julia Cohen, Gregory Ross, Kelly Columberti.
Good evening, Superintendent Rendell and members of the Board. I am here today to speak on Agenda Item G.2, which addresses how these meetings are meant to function, grounded in transparency and meaningful public participation. But what does that really mean if those principles are ignored when they matter most? This Board stood before the public and promised that if the state cleared Ms. Calhoun to teach again, her reinstatement would be reconsidered. That has happened. The state cleared her. She has done everything asked of her, but instead of action, there has been silence. Instead of accountability, delay. And instead of transparency, a decision made quietly without community input or explanation. We are watching a commitment being broken in plain sight. And for the students, parents, and educators who were told that their voices matter, that breaks more than just trust. It breaks belief in the process. Some now say she can't be rehired until her probation is over, but that's not how the process works. State probation is served while teaching. This delay is not about policy, it's about politics. And while adults play politics, students are the ones who lose. They lose access to a teacher who has proven her excellence in the classroom time and time again. And beyond the impact on one teacher, there's a larger cost. When decisions like this are made behind closed doors, it sends a chilling message that this space is not one where people are truly heard, but one where those who speak up risk being pushed out. That's not the environment this Board says it stands for, and it's certainly not the one our community deserves. This isn't just about Ms. Calhoun. It's about the integrity of this Board and whether its words still carry weight. So I ask you, as a student and a member of this community, please do the right thing. Reinstate Ms. Calhoun. Thank you.
Gregory Ross, Kelly Columberti, Max Mattle.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. I hope you guys are really listening tonight. I'm going to speak about F9 and maybe touch on G1 as well. We'll see. We've heard phrases tonight, phrases that we've been hearing for a long time about this Board, right? Politics over students, extremism, political ideologies, adversarial relationships, right? For three, four years, we've been hearing that about this Board. Brevard deserves better. To get into it, what I want to go back to is what Pam talked about a little bit, is your exact quote, Dr. Rendell, about this whole thing, what you told the paper. This is no mistake. This was a conscious and deliberate decision to engage in gender affirmation without parental knowledge. Here's the thing, there isn't a BPS policy or a state statute that says gender affirmation. Doesn't even have those words in it. Can't be illegal to do gender affirmation using a name, because it's not. There's a pronoun law, sure. But that's not what you said, is it? You said she made a deliberate decision to engage in gender affirmation. That's politics over students. You came out and said what this is really all about. It's not about that she may have broken some rule that was backed by some statute that's fairly poorly written. That's the issue. And what that really goes back to, and G1 touches on this as well, and why all these people are up here talking about G1, is there's a lack of governance on this Board. I don't think you guys know what that word means. You make rash decisions. It's not all your fault, because the state does it as well. Sometimes you're driven by the state, I get that. The state's worse at it than you guys are, if you can believe that. You guys make rash decisions before you think things through, gather information, look at data. Instead, it's, hey, politics, go make this change. Now's the time. We've got to strike while the iron's hot, right? Your wireless cellphone policy is a perfect example of that. I'm going to talk more about that when the public hearing comes up on it. Jean, are you enjoying your phone there? I hope you're taking notes.
Kelly Columberti, Max Mattle, Quinn Dyges.
Hello. Hi. So I'm here to speak about G1. You know, when it comes to the phone policy, I'll admit, I'm not in a position of experience to be able to advise on that, which is a smart thing to do, to defer to people who have experience. So I have nothing to say about it. But what I was concerned about were, there was some rephrasing, some removal of details about what constitutes bullying, particularly where gender-based harassment is concerned. It's now totally put off to a different policy, which is dictated by Title IX. And if you follow federal government, you should be aware of what's happening at a federal level and how protections for, you know, even cis women are at risk these days. I find it funny... I find it funny that for as much talking is done about protecting women and children, they are usually the first ones to lose out when you go after the trans community. And where that's concerned, I've already brought up at a previous meeting that trans kids, trans individuals go through immense bullying. It is a mental health issue. It's something that we lose lives to, and it's incredibly serious. So I actually have a question for you guys, and it's just yes or no, and I would like everyone to respond. Do you think trans kids experience bullying? Mr. Thomas, would you be able to respond to that right now? Yes or no, do you think they experience bullying?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Campbell, do you think trans kids experience bullying?
Hold up, comment isn't back and forth, keep going.
It's not a conversation back and forth, just talk to us.
No back and forths? Okay, not even a nodding or a shaking of the head. I understand why you don't want to put that on the record, because it seems like you have support from certain groups that have agendas against the trans community. And so I'll go ahead and name names. So we all know, everyone in this room knows that Moms for Liberty is part and parcel of the reason why we have to have these ridiculous conversations. And this time, Jean, I don't care how many times you roll your eyes or laugh at me while I'm talking about it, but if you want to talk about bullying, if you want to talk about bullying, let's talk about Moms for Liberty and the fact that they harass people digitally, in person. People in this room have been harassed. In addition, not only specifically to harassment, but retaliation is mentioned in the bullying policy. And I would say that what you're doing against Ms. Calhoun is nothing short of retaliating against her for standing up for her students and being proven that she did the right thing. Because if the state isn't willing to punish her for referring to a student by a certain name, then what leg do you have left to stand on? Honestly, I'm glad that you are not allowing yourselves to respond right now, because I know there's nothing you could really say to comfort me or anyone in this room that you actually are looking out for students, or looking out for teachers, or I'm just a member of this community, okay? But I want to make sure that the kids that are going to the schools that I went to have at least half a good education or social time as I had, because they deserve to feel safe, they deserve to feel respected, and we're going to keep coming back until they
Max Mattle, Quinn Dykes, Ryan Matrigali.
Good evening, board. I cut out a lot of what I was going to say tonight, A, because I spoke two meetings ago on this exact very topic, which is going to be G1 on wireless communication devices. And a lot of what I still have to say has already been said tonight, but I want to make sure it is reiterated, because it's important. When I was in high school, yes, I graduated in 2024, as all of you know, I had classes with forty kids in them and one teacher. If you were a teacher in that classroom and kids were on their phones, you would be going around that classroom the entire time trying to get kids off their phones rather than teaching the curriculum you had planned for that day. I have seen it happen with your old policy, and I am sure enough that it's going to happen with this one. Second, I want to talk about how I used my own laptop, this exact one, for education purposes, and how the language of this current policy does not allow for it. I was a dual enrollment student. My sophomore year of high school, I hopped on a bus midway through second period and was bussed over to Eastern Florida to take my dual enrollment courses and bussed back during my lunch period. On Fridays, there are no Eastern Florida classes. Where would they put us? In the cafeteria. Had I not had my laptop, I would be sitting there doing absolutely nothing for that entire hour and a half during the school day. So because of these things, I urge you to revise this policy and come back to it when you've done so.
Quinn Dykes, Ryan Matrigali, Xander Colangelo.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community members. My name is Quinn, and tonight I wanted to offer the perspective of a newer Brevard County resident in reference to Item G2, the final public hearing on revisions to Policy 0165, which governs how this board conducts its meetings. I've lived here for about a year and a half now, the last board meeting being my first BPS meeting. I chose to do my own due diligence before speaking at that meeting, which included watching every single board meeting, board workshop, and any live stream recording this board has published for the last six months. Throughout those recordings and last meeting, I have received conflicting information from board comments, one of which you've already heard from so many community members about your positioning surrounding Ms. Calhoun. Policy 0165-
You know what, ma'am, I'm going to stop you for just a brief second. That was pulled from the agenda.
Okay, but the G2, the policy hearing is still the public meeting?
The agenda, when it got approved, the motion to approve it was to approve it without G2, so it is no longer being considered by the board.
Okay, well, thank you for censoring me.
All right.
Can we try G1?
You have your time to speak about anything that's on the agenda.
Okay, so G1. Okay, well, I'm going to try this again, and we'll see, we'll all get my second warning. These conflicting comments made from meeting to meeting and lack of elaboration and transparency of reasoning in the decision-making is something the community is begging for. This is not about politics, this is about governing officials following through on decisions and comments they make to the public. I challenge you all to go back and even just watch the last three months of recordings. Upon reflecting, can you say these decisions and comments you made were in good faith? Were they digestible for you community members to understand the follow of logic? I urge you all to act on your own responsibilities from the Student Code of Conduct, which says to promote a positive, safe, and supportive school climate, and communicate and respond to parents, guardians, in a way that is accessible and easily understood. Following your own responsibilities, I urge you to host a moderate, neutral town hall outside of this chamber into a place where everyone, no matter if they're a student, parent, guardian, school staff, or administrator, can have an open conversation without fear or intimidation. No one is asking you to step outside your wheelhouse. I understand the relations that have prior to me moving to this county have transpired, but as a new resident, I would really appreciate and love to see an outside moderated discussion, so there can be moderated back and forth in a neutral way. Policy, actually, I'm not going to say policy, to ensure transparency, accountability, and meaningful public participation in decision-making. This board has the opportunity to listen to their community members and pass the actions that the community members who voted you all in would like to see. I'm sure you guys have a hard job, and we appreciate you doing this job, but I would really like to see this board really focus on their community members.
Ryan Matrigali, Xander Colangelo, Sebastian Martinez.
Good evenings, members of the board and Dr. Rendell. Thanks for having me and allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be speaking on Agenda Item G1. To start off, this new law that has been passed is only supposed to enforce electronic device bans on grades K through eight, not nine through 12. The ruling of this new policy you plan to implement is not as beneficial as you may believe it to be. Why make it so students can't use their phones or personal devices during lunchtime or breaks as long as they are paying attention in class? What about the students who need special devices to be able to properly learn in a school setting? Onto my next point. Many high schools have a college advisor on campus that you can speak to about classes or career paths. Wouldn't it make sense to use your laptop or tablet to look at said classes or campuses to ensure that what you're talking about is correct? College advisors and counselors are good, but no one is that good unless they have photographic or perfect auditory memory. Why make their jobs more difficult? On another note, Satellite High School spent $4,000 over the budget to purchase paper for this upcoming school year to make up for the lack of phones and laptops that students supply using their own personal devices. On the topic of making people's jobs more difficult, what about teachers? Just as an example, in physics classes, you might use your phone in place of stopwatches because of their convenience. Perhaps in research classes, or dare I say AP literature, some sites or books may be blocked or banned and can be accessed through school devices or school libraries. This can be a problem, as it may restrict students from finding the crucial information they may need for their project or study. On another note, that may be off-topic but still on agenda, why are students who follow the rules while using their personal devices forced to suffer, while students who watch Euphoria and Game of Thrones on campus just find another way to sneak their devices during class? On top of that, applications like College Board Common App and Big Future School require multi-device authentication to access, which affects the students, seniors, and AP students. Why make your successful students and hard-working staff suffer by wasting precious class time by waiting for the next day and the day after that to get their school devices set up when it could all be solved with a device like the one I hold in my hand? Why make it more difficult for those students who work tirelessly, day after day, to keep their grades up? Why make it more difficult for the students who slave away on college boards studying for AP exams in May? Why make it more difficult for the students like me to prepare ourselves for college in the upcoming year, where those college students have to use their personal devices? It just doesn't make sense. I know that you want what's best for your schools and your district, but why not just follow the state with this one? I think the policy you're adding is just making an unnecessary hurdle for your teachers, students, and even parents. Personal devices aren't a weapon of destruction, but rather a tool for the path of success.
Xander Colangelo, Sebastian Martinez, Zaire Somdi.
Good evening. I'm going to get straight to the point with anecdote from my class. My school was unable to provide me with a Spanish class, and because I wanted to graduate with my bilingual CCL, I had to take it online in a lab period. However, the computer I was given was inadequate to actually take the class. About fifty percent of the time, it would take half the class period to log on to the computer. In many cases, I just never even got to my course. And even today, I measured the amount of time it took me to log in for my first period to get on to my computer, took me sixteen minutes out of our forty-nine-minute class period, which is pretty much one-third of my entire class period, which is wasted trying to log in. And when I got home today, it took me sixteen seconds, not sixteen minutes, to get on to my computer, which, that's huge change that could really affect our learning in And also, for science research, in order to complete my project last year, I had to use proprietary software that wasn't available on the school computers. So, science research is a way that I can actually show my academic strength, and that's being limited by not being able to bring in a personal computer. One final point is that I understand you don't want to actually stop the bullying, the hazing, and the drugs that go on in our schools, but rather sweep it under the rug, making sure nobody can actually record it with their phones, that way nobody actually sees what's actually happening in our schools. And I see you shaking your head, thinking it's an absurd statement, but the application that the state asks every single high school student to download is Fortify FL, and it requires your phone to report bullying, hazing, drugs, things to keep the students and the community safe, but that's now not being allowed. So I'd like you guys to consider principal discretion. Allow the principal to approve certain times we can actually use these devices. And actually, one more point, while I still have some time, about teachers. I've seen from the start of the school year this year to the start of school year last year, that my teachers are much more scared and frightened to make personal connections with their students, because they feel like if they get too personal, if they actually build a connection with their students, that they can be fired up and their contract not renewed. So I think it's something we should really consider.
Sebastian Martinez, Zaire Somdi, Devin Van.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Sebastian Martinez, and as always, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm speaking on Agenda Item F9, Instructional Staff Recommendations, and I'd like to start with asking the board, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Susan, Mr. Trent, Ms. Wright, to follow through with your commitments you made to the public during the April 22nd board meeting. We're on record, you all, in one way or another, came to the consensus that if the state votes to reinstate Ms. Calhoun's contract, then you would all be interested in having her back as a teacher in your district. At past board meetings, I pointed out what seemed to be you all as community leaders deflecting blame and refusing to take accountability for how this district treated Ms. Calhoun. But even then, I said to myself, maybe there is just another reason they haven't reinstated Ms. Calhoun? Now we're back at the same crossroad. And just to refresh, you said Ms. Calhoun could be reinstated if the state of Florida decided to reinstate her teaching certificate. And again, to refresh, they voted unanimously, meaning without opposition, to not terminate her teaching contract. This was a true testament to sticking true to advancing better education in the state of Florida. But then a couple days later, I read an article where the superintendent essentially rejects the idea of hiring Ms. Calhoun in a statement full of political rhetoric. I talked to so many community members about education and education policy. The one thing people can agree to, regardless of political background, is that political agendas have no place on the school board. Period. So as a board, your main, if not one of the only, staff you oversee is the superintendent. You should be holding him to a higher standard if you want excellence. If you want excellence, you demand excellence of those in leadership. So now, it's back to you on whether or not you're going to stand by your word, whether or not you're going to restore Ms. Calhoun, whether or not you're going to put the interest of the school district before any existing political agenda or might score you extra points in a primary for higher office, Ms. Campbell. I mean, I know you've all seen how many open teaching positions you have. Fill the classrooms with teachers, not year-round substitutes or partial-time substitute teachers. I'm asking that you help take the right steps to restore a culture of collaboration, of respect, integrity, leadership, and professionalism. I'm asking you to put students before politics and to restore Ms. Calhoun today. Hold your superintendent accountable. Thank you so much for your time.
Zaire Somdi, Devin Van, Sarah Mersky.
Good evening, board members. I'm Zaire Kekehuna-Somdi. I'm here tonight because trust has been broken, and that matters deeply in the school system. This board looked the public in the eye and said that if the state cleared Ms. Calhoun to teach, her reinstatement would be reconsidered. The state has cleared her, that condition has been met, and instead of acting with integrity, you all are sitting on your hands. That is a broken promise, plain and simple, and is visible to every student, every parent, and every educator here in Brevard. We've now heard the excuse that she must complete her probation first, but that's not how that typically works, and it can be served while teaching. That means that this delay is not about rules, it's about politics. Every day she's kept out of the classroom is a day students miss out on access to a high-quality experience teacher and learning from someone who has already proven herself. Worse, this board's actions are creating damage. When good educators are punished instead of supported, and I want to emphasize good educators, when good educators are punished instead of supported, when commitments are made and then ignored, it sends a message that speaking up or even just doing your job with integrity could cost you everything. That fear is spreading, and it doesn't stop at the teacher's desk. Students are watching, families are watching, and the silence, the retaliation, and the games speaks volumes. If this board is serious about healing, about transparency, about representing the people of Brevard, then stop hiding. So tonight, I ask these things of you. Be honest with Brevard, bring Ms. Calhoun back, acknowledge that families are concerned and confused as to why this is happening, and put students before politics. Also, hearing the concept of a town hall sounds amazing, and I think I'm going to add that to my list of requests as well.
Devin Van, Sarah Mersky, Michelle Barano.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Rendell. My comment relates to Policy 5136, the wireless communication device policy. My children are in 12th and 9th grade at Satellite High School. They are taking advanced placement and honors courses, and the policy prohibiting the use of laptops is hindering their ability to be productive and prepared in school. Textbooks are online, sheet music is online, college applications are online, FAFSA is online, the computers and laptops available for use through BPS are not sufficient. They crash often, and substitute teachers are not able to pull them back online. I was actually hopeful when I initially heard that this board was going to work toward reducing phone use during instructional time, because I do believe that cellphones can be harmful and distracting for all of us. But the policy is not a solution to cellphone usage. It is a vast overreach, and it puts high school students at a distinct disadvantage for no good reason. When politics are not well-thought-out and are not based in reality, you end up with situations that invite uneven enforcement and community confusion. As a parent, it's frustrating to watch our schools get jerked around with these confusing and nonsensical board decisions. Let high school students take notes on their laptops. Let highly effective high school teachers who have the respect of their students and students' parents teach. Stop making school more difficult for some of your best students in your hunt for political relevance. Thank you.
Sarah Mersky, Michelle Barano, Xander Moritz.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife of a husband who is part-owner of an aerospace company and job creator here in Brevard County. I'm a mom of two children who attend BPS. I'm a clinical social worker who has had the honor of serving the most marginalized of Brevard County. I'm a taxpayer, stakeholder, and voter. I live in District 2 for school board. I have a holistic interest in assisting this district in serving every student with excellence as a standard. Tonight, I will be addressing Agenda Item G1, the Wireless Communication Device Policy. In my late 30s and early 40s, I went back to college. My grades in GPA and undergrad were high enough that I qualified for the Advanced Standing Program for grad school, which means I was able to do my master's degree in one year instead of the traditional two years, while also earning a scholarship, running a household, being a wife and a mother, as well as graduating with honors. I could not have done any of this without my cellphone and my laptop. I needed my laptop and cellphone in class to exchange contact information for group projects and trips. I needed my laptop for various reasons during class, but mainly to write papers and attend Zoom calls. I also needed my laptop for my internship work. How are we supposed to equip the next generation of students without working from a laptop in class? How are they supposed to learn any computer science skills, learn how to learn CAD, coding, engineering, architecture programs, any aerospace technology work, and so on, without using a laptop in the classroom, or learning computer skills imperative to their future? We live on the Space Coast, and we should be offering a full steam education to equip students for college and job skills for the space industry and beyond. On a somber subject, on October 4th, 2024, Rockledge High School went on lockdown due to a student or students bringing a gun or guns to school. Another student saw the threat on their Snapchat, and they were able to access, they were able to access their Snapchat at school and notify the front desk and then school security. I shudder to think what would have happened if that student didn't see the threat on Snapchat and notified the authorities. Would we have had students coming out of that situation in body bags instead of handcuffs? Would my innocent child have been one of those who would have died that day? My husband and I were able to provide comfort, calm, and quiet prayers to our child that day. I don't know if that would have been the last time I would have talked to my child. Please do not take that away from me and other parents. I would like to make the suggested changes to the policy, that students are allowed to use WCD as the direction and discretion of instructional staff for educational purposes only, and that student is able to use in an emergency. My hope is that this board accepts this as a solution and not a criticism.
Michelle Barano, Xander Moritz, Anya Dennison.
Hello, my name's Michelle Barano. I'm a parent of a student in 10th grade, and I didn't prepare remarks before I got in this room, but I felt it was important, since I was able to actually physically be here, that I represent the dozens and dozens and dozens of people on my Facebook groups that are expressing incredible frustration over the cellphone policy. There's been a pretty consistent theme here tonight on two issues, and I'm in line with everyone pretty much on those. I do want to point out that the state law is clear for the undergrades, but for high school, you have discrepancy here. I read through the policy, trying to understand what it was that you were trying to do. I'm very fortunate, I consider myself incredibly fortunate, that I attended school pre-cellphone, and I can't imagine the grief the teachers have to deal with, because they are a horrible distraction. They are. I don't know anyone who doesn't think they are a distraction. However, you'll notice I'm relying on mine right now. Just about everybody that came up here was reading remarks off a cellphone, because it is a superior way of communicating in terms of writing notes to yourself, taking pictures. My student would always take pictures of the blackboard so that she could focus on what the teacher was saying, read the information when she got home. She can't do that anymore. She was kind of having a panic attack today, worried that she was going to miss something. They are horrible distractions, they are the world we live in today. I noticed you guys all have laptops on your desk. Try and imagine getting through your workday without being able to use your laptop. For the high school, at least where you have discretion, I urge you to reconsider this policy. Ideally, it would make sense for the students to be able to use their cellphones during the breaks. Think about this, they have five minutes to get to their class. How do they tell time? How are they going to get to class on time if they can't regulate where they are in terms of the schedule? I mean, this is everything now. It's not just a phone. It's your external hard drive, it's your brain, it's your schedule, it's your clock, it's everything, it's your memory. So, being told that they can't use it is going to be a real hardship in a lot of areas. I understand that they are a distraction. Punish the misbehavior, don't punish the entire student body all day long. If you use your cellphone in class, it gets taken away. You do it again, you get detention or some other kind of punishment. We've been doing this in the past, we've made it this far without this rule. And the laptop rule is incredibly frustrating. I spent a day at my kid's school registering his parents for PTA on student equipment. It was horrible. When it wasn't crashed, it was stalled. Unless you can provide excellent adequate equipment to substitute for what people are doing with their laptops, their e-readers, and their cellphones, you should allow them back in the class. Thank you.
Xander Moritz, Anya Dennison.
Good evening, members of this board, Superintendent Rendell. My name is Xander Moritz, and I am here tonight to speak to Item 8 on Instructional Staff Recommendations. This is the item that determines who will and will not be teaching in the Brevard School District this year. It is exactly where the decision to rehire Ms. Melissa Calhoun belongs, and it is why I am here tonight. I do not live in Brevard County. I am here because this decision and the way that it has been handled has drawn a large deal of concern that extends far beyond this boardroom. Across Florida, people are watching, because the precedent you set here will not start at the Brevard County line. If that were simply a local personnel matter driven by local education priorities, this whole situation would not have sparked this level of attention. But, it is clear to everyone in this room and beyond it, that what is happening here is being shaped not by local educational priorities, but by national political agendas. This is not in the best interest of Brevard students. This is also why a refusal to fully engage in real conversation, it sends its own message. When a decision is played out as political theater, that will always draw an audience, and that audience will always take away a message from your actions, whether you intend it or not. Earlier this year, the board said it would consider her reinstatement if the state allowed her to continue teaching under probation. That was the clear condition that this board set. Now, the state has done exactly that. They have upheld her license, placed it under probation, and cleared her to be in the classroom, yet she still is not at your explicit instruction. This should not be about politics, it needs to be about integrity, fairness, and maintaining our commitments. When a governing body says one thing, follows due process, and then fails to honor its own word, it damages trust not only with one person, but with every student, every parent, and every educator in this district who expects you to model the same accountability we expect of the students in Brevard. We must hold ourselves to the same standards we expect from our students. This decision is also happening amongst the backdrop of deepening concerns about the relationship between the board and its community. In recent weeks, residents have expressed frustration at the lack of open dialogue on major decisions, and I don't need to tell you that the boardroom does not feel like a healthy, sustainable culture. There is toxic relationships developing, and we need to heal them through the creation of an open, moderated, sustainable community town hall. That is why I'm calling for two clear, clean actions tonight. The first, amend the instructional staff recommendations to include Ms. Melissa Calhoun's reinstatement. Second, commit to holding a moderated, neutral community town hall, not here in this chamber and not under the rules of a board meeting, but where board members, parents, students, teachers, everyone can come together for an open, respectful, and resource-driven dialogue. Reinstiting Ms. Calhoun would be a concrete act of fairness and a follow-through on your word. Hosting a town hall would be a clear step towards repairing relationships and restoring trust. Together, these actions would demonstrate that the board is serious about listening to the people of Brevard and moving forward together. Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your commitment to your word and to the services of Brevard Public Schools.
Anya Dennison.
Good evening, board. My name's Anya, and I'm here to speak on the Instructional Staff Recommendations. I do also want to offer a quick note on the tech policy before I get into the comment I prepared. High school classrooms are integrated with cellphones and tech of all sorts, like QR codes, Kahoot literally works off phones, capturing notes and so on. If you've visited a high school in like the last five years, it's standard practice for students to bring laptops to school and use them, because school laptops are usually slow, new systems that are outdated are not preferred. Gen Z doesn't like Microsoft, it takes time out of a student's day to switch between platforms from school and home, so just offering that for consideration. iPads widely used for notes, super necessary, especially going into college. People bring them from high school to college, and it's just a thing, important to know, especially if you haven't visited recently. But I'm talking about Instructional Staff Recommendations, and I specifically want to talk about the fact that Ms. Melissa Calhoun's contract isn't being renewed despite everything that's happened at the state level. I think that it's really important to talk about the fact that there's not a reason that beyond her not being returned from probation, you're not reinstating her. I'm so confused about that. I think this, at its core, is about following through on our word, and you set a public condition, right? And the condition was set, and it was met, and the community expects it to be honored. So when it's not, of course, people are going to be confused and upset about it and just want clarity, right? Especially when we've seen cases where teachers on probation have continued teaching and it hasn't been an issue. And I think that, as a solution, first of all, I would love to see a town hall be brought forward with a neutral moderator, open format, students, educators, board members, everyone in the same room, to be able to ask questions in an environment that's comfortable and isn't just me talking at you for three minutes and you not being able to respond, right? Because that's not actually productive, and sure, you receive my information, but I don't get to receive yours outside of the superintendent's statement. So not super productive and doesn't build a relationship. I think that reinstating Ms. Calhoun and bringing that forward tonight would also be a phenomenal step. If not, I would also love to see dialogue about why you're choosing not to, and to address it in this meeting as opposed to just not bring it forward. Those two steps, I think, would put us in a better place. Would love to hear your thoughts and appreciate the time tonight.
That concludes our Agenda Item Only Public Comments. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to address the board with your concerns and suggestions. I would like to remind the public that the board is accessible for further conversations outside our board meetings through scheduling a meeting. We are now at the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are 23 items on the list under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items on today's agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul Roelcall, please.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open to public comments. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers on G1, Policy 2260-02. Is there anyone present that wishes to address this item?
Good evening again. You've already heard me speak about this topic mostly from the viewpoint of one of my daughters, but now I'm going to speak generally from both perspectives. One of my daughters came home from the first day of school to tell me that most of her teachers do not support this policy, but they are fearful of being fired. In fact, one teacher today, Ms.
Mr. Chair, can you pause a time?
Wrong policy.
Sorry, this is the anti-harassment policy that's being...
Yes.
Right.
All right, is there anyone else wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul Roelcall, please.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan. Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
All right. Here we go. Policy 5136. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item?
This is the Wireless Communication Device Policy.
I'm just going to continue where I was. Scroll back to that. One of my daughters came home from school the first day to tell me that most of her teachers don't support the policy, but they are fearful of being fired. In fact, one teacher today mistook a wallet for a phone and audibly said, "Please put that away, I don't want to be fired." The amount of stress felt by both the professionals and our students is unnecessary. It is now day two, and one of my daughters has already clocked that the tensions against adults during lunch are already rising. Lunch is a time where our students can decompress. While socials may get the most talking time, what is often ignored is the use of music, reading, and studying. Without having access to any technology devices, what are bored kids most likely to do? As stated by one of my daughter's teachers on the first day, quote, "Bored kids get in trouble. They'll fight just to fight. I expect fighting to get a lot worse, and I hope you all can avoid that." Unfortunately, Brevard Public Schools has not fostered a healthy and safe environment for our teachers to speak out, so instead, many teachers instead turn to their students and ask them to come speak out or email instead. As a BPS-educated student myself, whose daughters are now sitting in front of many of the same teachers I had, my heart breaks for what they're experiencing. The need, the idea that they need our students to speak out instead of feeling safe to do it themselves speaks volumes. Ms. Campbell, I am sure you can relate to the plight of one of my son's friends. He's in multiple music electives, and each requires a thick binder with sheet music. Those same binders can be replaced with an iPad for digital sheet music, but now he can't use that. And just a reminder, many of our students don't have access to lockers because their buildings don't have them. This policy is not well thought out. It's a knee-jerk reaction with tons of unintended consequences that work against student achievement. By lumping our high schools into this policy, we are putting undue stress on our students and ripping the autonomy from our teachers and administrators. I think Samantha said it best to me. Why are they targeting the smart kids? Can't they just hold the troublemakers accountable? Isn't that their actual job?
I want to reiterate everything Ms. Curvin just said, just off the top, right? I really think you guys need to rethink this policy. I think you made a couple of, I don't want to say mistakes, but you did it over the summer. A lot of parents didn't know about the 9th through 12th ban that goes above and beyond the state law. I think this policy has been made without serious consideration of the impacts across all of Brevard Public Schools. You've heard tonight about IEPs could be impacted. You could very easily end up in a place where students with an IEP have access to technology items in class, and the other students don't. It's going to impact some students more than others. And I stand up here as somebody, as somebody else said, I think everybody in this audience agrees, no phones during instructional time without severe exceptions is a reasonable ask. But that's not what this policy is, right? That's not what this policy is. This policy is as far as you can get with cellphone bans. I get it. I get why you think that's an important thing, but it's a bad policy. You guys are the board, you can recall this policy, go back to the drawing board, get more community input. I talked about governance, and that's what we don't see from this board. We don't see community input. You guys make your decisions in a vacuum, a literal vacuum. You're getting probably good input from your staff and your teachers, but there's no community input. There's no surveys. You know, you guys do your yearly survey, and if you're making policy decisions off a one-time snapshot survey where you're not even getting 40% to answer, you're making mistakes. Okay? You guys need more data, more input, and I know it takes longer. That's what you got to do to make good decisions. Please rethink about this policy before you vote on it tonight.
Hi, I hope you all had a great summer. My name is Ava Newman, I'm a senior at Satellite High. I wanted to share a bit of my story as the last few years have been a little chaotic. I play violin, I am huge into orchestra and have been since 5th grade. I am huge into orchestra and have been since fifth grade. When I got to high school, I'm not going to lie, I wasn't the best player. With experienced, inexperienced players, they tend to not be able to tune or really play in time. I promise I'll get to a point. During class, my teacher would allow us individual practice time for solo ensemble, concerts, or even like concerto competitions. I came from a not-so very rich family, so the materials that I had were my phone. Tuning goes on the phone. I have a downloading, I have an app on my phone that allows me to tune my instrument since I cannot do it by ear at the time. It also allows me to have a metronome so I can stay in time while working on my pieces. Most people use their phones for situations like these so that teachers don't have to spend their own money on tools like this to just hand out to all their instruments. I also teach instruments and my first recommendation to all my students is to download tuning apps on their phone in case they cannot tune their own instrument for them. This allows them to learn how to tune their instrument as well as watch and see their, how their playing fluctuates. If you can't see where I'm going with this, I'll say it straight. Banning phones in high school levels can be detrimental to a lot of teachers and students when it comes to the tools needed for that development. Before you say, "Oh, well, we survived back in the day without phones." Times have changed. In fact, the orchestra program at Satellite has only gotten better since then due to our amazing teacher as well as the support we get from everyone around us and the tools that are available to us. But now that fools have basically been banned, teachers now are expected to get the tools that are unnecessary when phones could just be permitted. You are denying phones to juniors and seniors who are on their way to adulthood. Actually, most seniors are turning 18 real here, here real soon. You're telling me my peers could get sent to war but not use a cellphone in class? Instead of taking things away permanently, why not try and teach these students how to regulate their screen time correctly? Why can't we pull out our phones at lunch, the hallways? More importantly, why enforce these teachers to buy supplies when it could easily be done by phones? Are you going to supply these teachers with the tools that are being taken away from these phones? Music teachers have to buy manual metronomes, tuners, which can average around $50 if you want a decent one. Physics teachers are now having to buy stopwatches. When I was in physics, I used my phone to more timely, like see my projectiles. Not to mention with kids not being able to look at their phones for simple things like Google Classroom, Focus, teachers and counselors having to print more paper and more class times being wasted during school. Yesterday, I had spent 10 minutes figuring out how to use the bathroom passes, another five trying to sign in to the computers since the internet at our school is so slow, and another five having to put computers away. Instead of spending 20 minutes on figuring out how to work...
Thank you so much for that time.
So I want you guys to think, so the state made the rule for kindergarten through eighth grade, right? There's a reason they didn't make it kindergarten through 12th grade. They had, they had a thought process behind that. And I, I want you guys to, to consider, yes, adapting some sort of rule that prevents students from being distracted by cellphones, it's very important. Everyone agrees with that. But the way the, your new rule is right now, it's not going to actually solve the problem. Kids are still going to, to, to do what they're not supposed to do, as even as much discipline as you can give them. So I, I want us to think about who the rule is meant to help and who it's hurting. It's, it's meant to, to help the people who are going to get in trouble no matter what, but it's hurting the people who are trying to get ahead, the people who are trying to use these tools to advance their education the farthest. They're the ones who are working the hardest. And it's hurting the people who ha, who are less able and the people who are already behind. It prevents them from catching back up. You're just leaving them in the past without these extra technologies. And that's my main point. I want to make sure you guys know that. I think a proper solution would be to rework this rule and also to allow the principals to have the discretion to know when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate to use these devices. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name's Chris Higginbotham. I'm a parent of three. And on this item, I just want to say, I spoke earlier and my phone was going off. Multiple teachers, multiple school board employees are just saying, "I can't believe you spoke about that. That's so great. We need this. We love this policy." That might not be exactly the most popular voice in this room right now, but I'm telling you, they, teachers want this, administrators want it, parents want it. Most of the kids, some of the kids I talked to want it. I get not a lot of kids want it. It is what is best for these kids. These are, I have, my kid is now here with me. He was at wrestling practice over at Viera. He's not going to want to lose his cellphone when he's in high school. However, my kid won't be using a cellphone during school because he's there to educate. Dr. Rendell, under your leadership, you spent a lot of money on technology, buying computers, refurbishing computers, internet, high-speed internet, a lot of money went into technology. Students will adapt. They'll overcome. Our student population is smart and they are well-versed in technology. This is not the only county where this is happening. I come from Orange County. I was administrator over there. Multiple counties in this state are doing this. Kids are doing just fine. They still have access to the internet. Those computers work. I just want you to understand that I hope we have this policy. I think as a parent, we need it. And I think more than the people in this room have a voice and they want it to happen. And it is what is best for our students. I thank Dr. Rendell for you spending the money for that technology. The kids do not need their cellphones at school. The facility is ready for this technology. Ms. Suhon back there, she's doing great at our facilities, so much so that we saw her here this mo, this afternoon. And that's about it. I appreciate it. Thank you guys for your time.
Hello again. I wanted to speak as a student who this policy is directly affecting. And amongst my classmates that I've talked to for the past two days, as today was the second day of school, this policy has greatly impacted our learning day-to-day. Because not being able to use our personal laptops or iPads to take notes in class has affected our ability to learn content and preparing us for the future. In college, I have three older sisters and they are all in college. And in college, nobody uses paper and pencil because it is impractical. People use iPads because teachers prepare their lectures and put them on slide shows and they can directly take notes on the, on their iPad, on the lectures that the teacher is talking about. So if our goal is to prepare us for college, which is why I'm going to school and many of my peers are going to school, we want to go to college. So practicing using an iPad to take notes will prepare us for college. And forcing us to not use all of the tools that we are so lucky to have is negatively affecting our future. I ask you what the point of this policy is? Students are going to be distracted, whether it's by their phone, talking to their friends during class. Those students will get in trouble. But the students who are using these as tools to further their education are being impacted more than those who would get in trouble regardless. Thank you.
Hi, it's me again. Jennifer Nagy, Edgewood. So Edgewood's one of those schools where we have kids that are on the super exceeder spectrum. They're the APs, the dual enrollments, the high achievers. The principal just explained to me this week about the, the discipline policy associated with this, where the first time the phone gets taken away, the second time the parents have to come up and get the phone, the third time they get a three-day suspension. And then she laughed and she said, "Do you know that you only get a one-day suspension for vaping?" And she goes, "As long as it doesn't have THC." Which I was like, "Okay." And I was like, that, that actually made me laugh out loud because I was like, "You mean that our kids, the ones who are going to get in trouble are the kids who are like taking notes and trying to work on stuff during lunch hour on their computers are going to get a three-day suspension for using their personal computers?" And she goes, "I certainly hope not." And I certainly hope not, guys. So I'm hoping that we can have a little discussion about this before you approve it. Pretty please. Thank you.
Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
We need a second for discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it, yeah.
Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
When we first started discussing this, I was all for being zero, zero tolerance. And the only thing I did not really consider was some of the points being made about the use of laptops and iPads. And I'm not saying I wouldn't be supported as it is, but I think it'd be, from my perspective, prudent if we were to table this and to, to give it a, you know, a month or so that we can fully investigate the, if there's the unintended consequences. I would hate for us to approve this and then we're, we're dealing with unintended consequences. I know Orange County does it and there's other counties that do it and have no problem. I just want to make sure that how we address it is concerning laptops and iPads is, you know, that we have everything the way it needs to be, that we're all comfortable with it. I'm just not so sure that being a strict, a strict ban on iPads and laptops is, is definitely is the right way to go.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah. I'll jump in here on this one big time. All right. Here, I'm going to, I'm going to go on a soapbox for a few minutes because some of the things that changed in this policy, guess what? They were already there. The whole, the whole iPad, the whole laptop, that conversation, this is not new to the policy. If you look at the policy change, it's what's in green. It really is no cellphones. Prior to, we had a rule in place that said with the principal's discretion. And guess what we found? When we walked the classrooms or you're going to lunch and you see kids doing TikTok videos or things like that, I'm going, "What, what is happening here? Why are we, we're at school. We're here to learn today." So for me, I'm going, "Okay, there's, there's a lot of conversation happening that just doesn't really make the most sense." Some of this policy was already there. It already existed. The principals already had the discretion to allow the phones to be used and it still was being abused. The, the rhetoric out there that you're punishing kids, our intent is not to punish kids. It's the exact opposite, 100%. It's to make the classroom a productive learning environment where cellphones aren't a distraction, where a kid's not looking at a cellphone and all of a sudden a text message pops up or an alert from a Snapchat or whatever, and now you're going to tell me a kid is going to go, "Okay, no." I mean, I have a teenager. I have a high school student. I know how this works. So I'm not that far removed from this situation to understand truly that this is a distraction to our children, 100% a distraction to our children. And I think in order to have the most productive learning environment, we need to take this step. I support this and I, I told you, John, I jokingly said I'll probably be the most hated school board member after this from the students because they're not going to be in favor of it at first, but guess what else? I'll tell you this, my children get the opportunity, they've got the opportunity to go on vacation every year, and we go to a place where they don't get any cellphone service and it's one of the most memorable vacations they have. And one of the things that they tell me every single time is that they love the fact that they don't have their cellphone. And I'm like, "Really? Wow." And you don't even know that until you get removed from it for a little while to understand that this maybe isn't the best thing for us. I know it's convenient. I know that it's replaced the ability to, to write notes. I don't think that's a good thing. I personally don't think that's a good thing. But for me, I, I support the policy. I, I know it was going to come with some criticism. I was fully prepared for that. I, I just think that this is what is truly in, in the best interest of our students and will make our classrooms more productive. And that's all I have to say.
And just to clarify, I was not suggesting, I'm, I'm not for using, you know, cellphones during school. I was just wanting to make sure that we, there's not unintended consequences with regard to iPads and, and laptops.
Which was already there.
But that was before, that was at a principal's discretion. Now it would be totally, that discretion would be removed.
Oh, one more quick thing. I would like to note this too. Sorry, I just said this before. There's all this talk about this happening right now. This policy hasn't been approved yet, so it's not actually in place. So I'm not really sure. I'm getting emails from people about this policy and, and kids coming back into, into the school saying, "Oh, no cellphones are allowed." Right now, our old policy is what currently is in existence. And, and we did that strategically so that we could do this whenever the school system was, when we were back in session, so that we could campaign this and let everyone know this is what the changes are, have a grace period, so it wasn't like shocker, welcome back to school, no cellphones. That's not the way that it's being done. We're doing it the exact opposite. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. So just, just give us a minute. We, we've heard you. So just, just a couple of items of correction before I share my thoughts on this. And schools are communicating this out. They, and because there is something we've already voted on, we've already approved, and that is the student code of conduct. All of this language is in the code of conduct. So in schools, yes, we talked with Ms. Dampier and we said, "Hey, can we officially, with the consequences, everything, the September 2nd date is the date." Schools are already putting it in place and letting people know that there's, there's no point in, and I understand it. Why would they not? One, it's in the code of conduct, but also if you're going to do this for the first couple of weeks and then we're going to have a bait and switch and do it later. They're, they're getting that communication out there. I don't think anybody's gotten a three-day suspension yet because, you know, it's only the second day of school. But I, just, just to be clear, the student code of conduct was already approved by us. It's already out there. Okay? And the other thing is, yes, in the policy, that part is not new about laptops and computers, but we have not said, we have not said, Board, that we're going to continue to allow principal discretion for iPads and laptops. We have said, we're adding, it specifically says, "All students may not use," the new part, "a wireless communication device," which is defined in the first paragraph as all those things during the school day. They all have to be powered off or all, and stored out of sight during school hours from first bell to last bell. There is no exception. No exception for laptops, no exception for iPads. I, now, with that being said, and I appreciate what you say about taking a media break, absolutely, but school's not vacation either. And it is wonderful when we have time to get away and to decompress and, and, but we're not trying to be productive in those times. And when we're at school, we're productive. And I have to tell you, Board, I hope that you have noticed in, not necessarily tonight, but in the communication we're getting via phone calls and emails, this isn't really a political issue, a right-left conservative-liberal-republican-democrat issue because the proof of that is that once parents started having their eyes opened and realizing this is going to happen, I'll address that in just a second. The very first email I got was from someone who I know has been an active part of Moms for Liberty. And the very next email right behind it, which made me laugh, was someone who is, you know, someone who's emailed me before and clearly is more on the left. So I, this is a bipartisan issue of people who like it and a bipartisan issue of people who don't like it. And I think when it comes to the students, they're pretty, most in the don't like it camp. And I realize, we don't make decisions. We appreciate student input, but we have to, we do what we feel like is best for students. I continue to share with you guys what I shared back in May, when we first started having these conversations. There's too many things that our students use and for us to be, prepare them for the real world. And we brought some, some people have mentioned some things tonight that I had honestly forgotten about, which music. And I've got, you know, I've got musician students who absolutely use their metronomes, use their tuners. They do that all the time. I told you about my son who records, who has had permission to record his jazz solo and would go home and play it over and over and over again and repeat it and then the next day he would go back and record it again to see if he got better. There are, and then we've got all the science research, I don't have science research kids, but we've got tons of science research kids that we recognize every year. And I would, I know Mr. Cheaton would love to say that we have all the things that they need to help them be successful, but we know, we are trying to reduce our refreshment rate so we are getting faster, better technology all the time and the ET department is doing their best job they can, but we don't, we do not have all the things that the students need to be successful in all, in all the ways. And, you know, the dual enrollment thing came up today. So my stance has not changed on this. I would urge, at the risk of sending Ms. Dampier into, into a frenzy because she didn't want us to going back and forth, she wanted us to nail it down, so we're not going back and forth, but at the risk of doing that, I would urge that if this passes tonight and we don't table it, that we go immediately back into work session so we can fix the language and, and try to find some kind of compromise so that students have access... try to find some kind of compromise so that students have access to at least some devices with approval, with approval, to use them for academic reasons. And if we want to put all the parameters on there that we can, we probably won't think of all of them, but to have more flexibility. So I just urge us, if this passes, that we go into our very next work session to workshop this and see if we can't get some better language around this. That's, like I said, if it passes tonight. I've been a no from the beginning, haven't changed my stance for the same reasons. And I'll, to be quite honest, it frustrates, a couple of things frustrate me. One, it frustrates me that, you know, when we talk about the language of, well, the other policy wasn't good enough because people weren't enforcing it, then we need to make sure people are enforcing it. If the dress code as it is, by the way, it's not being enforced in every school evenly, but if the dress code is not being enforced, we don't then automatically go, well, the dress code's not being enforced and now we're gonna make everybody in the district wear uniforms, or something else, you know, to that extreme. I think we need to, we need, we had a good thing in place, it was not being enforced, I hear you. People should not be recording videos in the hallways, I get it. Enforce that, double down on it if we need to. But when it comes to academic reasons, and if we want to say no lunches, no passing periods, but when it comes to academic reasons, I urge the Board to rethink that and let's put that back in because that's really important to train our students. I think one of the reasons why we're getting the pushback, I actually was surprised by it, to be honest. One of my good friends is a dean's clerk, and when she started pushing me on this about a month ago, and she is also, you know, a parent, and I thought, well, we've been talking about this, wasn't this in the news in May? But the parents weren't paying attention, the community wasn't, maybe it wasn't publicized like I thought it was, and now it is. And so I don't think it's, it's really hard for us to say, I've talked to all these people and they, I just don't think we're gonna, I'll be honest, my son came home yesterday, who I have told, if it passes, you will, I will not back you up. If you get caught with your cellphone, if you get suspended for three days, you're gonna be suspended for three days, I don't care if you're a school board member, son, you're gonna follow the rule. But just so you know, he came home and his impression from the, from his teachers, who I guarantee you, not a single one of them stood there and said, I think this is a stupid rule. But his impression with the teachers was, they're not supportive of it. This was a board initiative, the staff and the discipline committee that we put in place, we don't have to do what they say because we are the ones that set the policy, but that recommendation was not from them. This is one of the places where we've overridden them. And we have the prerogative to do that, but I think we're making a mistake. So I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So the one thing that I did want to say is I appreciate everybody coming out, I appreciate our students coming out and giving that voice, I truly do, I think it's good for us. But I do want to say, we all have been in our schools for the last two days. I've been to every single one of my high schools over the last two days, talking to kids about this and everything else. So the thought that this board is not actively engaged with their students and their parents and the teachers and everything else is a farce. But I will tell you this, I have no, absolutely no desire to not remove the cell phones from the hallways, from the cafeterias and everything else, none, none at all. In fact, I got reports back from my administrations in two of my schools. One said that it was the loudest that they've ever had a lunch period because the kids were actually talking. And if that is the, some of the news that comes back from the engagements that the kids are doing, I just got chills to my bones because I know what these things are doing. The same administrator said, I watched last year while kids were just scrolling while they were inside the cafeteria, not engaging with their people. I had another administrator tell me, you know what happened? The kids sat there and they said, what are we gonna do now? And then she said, get, go ahead and start communicating to each other. And they said, well, can we, we love that, but can we get some board games? So I allocated some resources to go ahead and get some board games for them. So the kids are actively starting to actually already do what we thought they would do, which is drop the phone, which has some of the most negative consequences for educational environments, negative consequences on social emotional healing, brains, everything else, all the way to attributions towards ADHD and everything else. Like, these cell phones are really, really bad inside of the educational work space. But at the same time, one of the things I did was I was at O'Gally High School and I was speaking to one of the political science classes, and they said to me, you know, my laptop from the school's not working, and the other issue is that I'm not allowed to use my personal laptop, so how do we do it? And that's a problem, right? So I looked at this tonight and I did call Ms. Nagy and talk to her and stuff like that, and Ms. Nagy, you weren't the only one, Sherry Lynn and other people are giving me a call on this item. But the thing is, is that I feel very strongly with exactly what you just said, Ms. Campbell, is we have to pass this policy now and then go immediately back in and open it up and have conversations about how we can allow access to it. We also, part of the conversation needs to be, why is it that our cell, that our laptops are not actually fully functioning for our students where they are? Is there something that we can do to allocate resources to get those to the table faster? But no, I am 100% in favor of passing this policy tonight and going back to the table prior to it coming back to give direction to the staff on utilization of some of those areas that we heard tonight. That's it.
Mr. Chair. Would the maker of the motion consider this? Because I'm all for banning the cell phones, that's not even a question. My concern is about the laptops and the iPads. Would you be, would the maker of the motion be amenable to amending the motion to approve it with the caveat that iPads and laptops are at the discretion, the use during instructional time are at the discretion of the principal?
I thought about that, okay? If I may just, you can't change it because it changes the whole thing.
We have to put it off for, if you make changes tonight, it doesn't go into effect for 28 days.
And that's the reason why we would want to pass and then make changes.
I hear what you're saying, and if that wasn't the rule, that's where I would have gone, to try to get discussion on it, but I think that's it.
Is there, my only question is, is there a rush to pass it tonight and then make the changes, or go ahead and table it and then make the changes and?
Well, because we would have to start over.
Right, we have to start back over.
Under, under rulemaking, we have to do the entire process within a 90-day window. If you don't do it, then you are outside of that and you have to start over anyways. So to get it in within that 90-day window where we are, we have to get this passed, otherwise we might as well start over. And then you're gonna have a student code of conduct that is not in line with your policies and you're gonna run into other issues.
Which wouldn't be the first time that's happened.
It's not something you can't overcome, it's just something the Board needs to be aware of in making a decision.
So in my view, we could table it, and in which case we would stand with the policy as it, you know, as it stood. We could vote it down, in which case the old policy would also stand. Or we could, we could approve it, and just so I, I'm a nay either way, but if we could approve it and ask the superintendent to not enforce the part about other devices, specifically iPads and personal laptops, that part until we get it worked out. I mean, I think those are options.
It's not gonna go into effect for 30 days, we can give that direction to the superintendent during that time at the next workshop, so.
Absolutely.
Call a question.
All right. You ready for the roll call? Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Nay.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
And if I may, you guys, the policy is not going into effect for 30 days. We have an opportunity to come back. The expressed issues that they had at the, that we're speaking to about the iPads and stuff, we're committing ourselves to go ahead and workshop and talk about it. So it's not, there it is. I understand where you're gonna go.
Yeah.
We have enough time.
We'll have to give that to the superintendent.
Yep, right.
Take the win.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we heard, it was good. So policy 5517, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who address, wants to, wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Okay, policy 5517-01, is there anyone present who wishes to address that item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes one item for the board review and may be brought back for addition at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken place on these items today. Does any board member wish to discuss this item? Okay. As Chair, I recognize the Board's attorney, Paul Gibbs.
All right, Board members, on behalf of Attorney Howard Marks, I'm notifying you that advices needed regarding the pending litigation styled Moms for Liberty et al. versus the School Board of Brevard County, Florida et al., case number 6:21-CV-01849, 11th Circuit, case number 23-10656. Pursuant to 286.011 Florida statute known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, I am requesting an attorney-client session with the Board for the purpose of discussing strategy and settlement regarding the litigation. I will ask the Board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons intending to be published. If the Board approves, I will work with the Board clerk to coordinate dates for the attorney-client session, working with our counsel's availability, and provide notice of the meeting inclusive of scheduling a court reporter. As required by the statute, only the following individuals may be present. School Board members Katie Campbell, Matt Susan, John Thomas, Jean Trent, Megan Wright, Superintendent Dr. Mark Rendell, Paul Gibbs, General Counsel Howard Marks, Burr Foreman, Jennifer Bridges, Burr Foreman. As required by the statute, I will ask a court reporter to record this session. Their notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this case, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the Board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section 286-011 Florida statutes to discuss strategy of pending litigation. If there are no objections, I'll instruct our attorney to work with the Board clerk and schedule the attorney-client session as requested. We will take a short recess in order to prepare for the non-agenda item, public comments portion of the meeting. We'll be back shortly. All right, at this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Who would like to go first?
I would.
All right, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Let me just catch myself up. First of all, I wanted to thank the One Voice Brevard organization for the Helping Hands Free Disability Resource Conference they did on August 2nd. It was a terrible weather day, but even with that, this was, and this being the inaugural event, it was my understanding that they had 433 people come, and we had two of our representatives from BPS, Dr. Fontaine and Dr. Baez, were there, and they sat on a panel and shared resources that are available through the school districts. So I wanted to thank them in particular for being there representing BPS and the great work we're doing with students with disabilities. Second of all, I want to thank Dave Lindeman and the construction project coordinators. I did my annual summer construction project tour, field trip, last Wednesday, and Dave, you know, took me around to several South Area District 5 schools. They just are representative of lots of the projects that went on across the district. I know they were all happening in all of your districts as well. We got to see such great work that our team did, so I thank all those people and including the administrators at the school for coming off task for a little bit to show me around and let me share with the public what was going on with their tax dollars. Third, I want to talk about the bus patrol, this is very important and one of the reasons why, if it's, if, for no other reason, I think we need to be back on camera, because I know the sheriff did his livestream on Friday, but we want to make sure everybody's understanding that, starting yesterday, up until through September the 17th, we finally have those stop-arm cameras activated on our buses, on every bus, and for the people who are ignoring the state laws about how you stop completely when a bus is stopped with the light, the lights are flashing, the red arms are out and people blow past them all the time. I have very, gotten very aggravated on Dairy Road in West Melbourne all the time, when I see it, happens all the time. So just want to give a warning to everyone, we want to keep our kids safe, so please, 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 when you see those buses stop, arms out, lights flashing, we don't want people to get those $250 tickets, that that number is set by the state, but that's gonna happen. And so from this period, we're in the warning period, it probably will just be about a week before people start getting those warnings, and as soon as we get to September 17th, it's not a warning anymore, it is a fine. So please pay attention, we want to keep our kids safe. And if you watched the video, you saw some of the atrocious video of people ignoring those signs, ignoring the law, and putting students at risk, and we don't want that to happen in Brevard. Finally, Board, not finally, I've got a couple of other things. Are the FSBA legislative platform proposals are due, the submission deadline is September the 5th. We can all, of course, as individual Board members, if you're part of FSBA, submit a proposal that would potentially go on the platform for this year, but if we want to do something together, our next board meeting workshop day is our last time to kind of workshop that. And I know, Dr. Rendell, we probably need to be getting our own Brevard-specific platform together because committee weeks start in October. But if, I would like to request that our next workshop, we kind of have just a short time to think if there's anything we want to put on together as a board, and then we can submit it together, that it's come from all of us, or if any of us have individual ones, we can put those on there as well. I wanted to address something about the cellphone issue, and I think, especially after having a conversation with Russell Cheatham, I just wanted to address a couple of things. One, phones can still be used before and after school, and I know that doesn't help the students who can't stay after school to work on science projects, but those things, as soon as that last bell rings, students can use them. Two, record auditions, to practice with friends, to do science projects and things like that because the restriction is from bell to bell. But also, because several people mentioned the lap, I just thought I'd share this from Mr. Cheatham, about the laptops being super slow in these last couple of days. He mentioned that after the computer sit through all the summer, when the first time they get fired up, which has happened a lot in the last two days, that it does take quite some time for those laptops to do all the updates. And so that very, it's not gonna be every day that it takes 15, 20 minutes, you know, however long for a computer to fire up and get going. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then finally, I did want to address some things that were said about Ms. Calhoun's situation, because I believe that as I went back to listen to my own response in the April meetings and the times we've had this conversation, I wanted to make sure, I'm like, what, that I'm being consistent. You know, the first meeting that Mr. Thomas brought it up, it was a surprise to me, so it was like this first reaction off the cuff, and then the next meeting we have a conversation. So I will tell you that what a lot of people have said tonight about the Board said this and the Board promised, those are words actually that came out of my mouth. I said that I would hope that after, that I supported the recommendation of the superintendent back in the spring when he non-renewed her, that I would hope that once the state was finished, that she would apply and be able to come back. That is me, I am one Board member. But I will tell you, I also shared, and I still do believe this, that this is not a simple matter. And I'm gonna liken it to this, we have, one of my good friends is a media specialist, and we had all the conflict about books a few years ago, and I was finding about, out about the process in which they add books to their collection. She said to me, you know, when I see, the way that they add things to the collection is they either have read it through themselves, or they've done, I think it was three, they've read three reviews from professional sources. But she said to me, look, if I see a book and it looks like it might be a controversial topic, I'm reading that one. I'm not just gonna take somebody's word for it. To me, this is the same kind of situation. We do have, since almost two years ago, the nickname rule, and I get it, my son goes by his middle name, I have to fill out the form, it's there in focus. If, so I get that, but if you have a situation where a name doesn't match, just to be completely honest and transparent, the biological six, that is one of those situations where you probably should check. So I'm going to, not your turn. I'm gonna say this, that being said, I have shared, as a Board member, and each Board member, I'm sure, I have shared my thoughts with Dr. Rendell, and I still am of the mind that I hope that once Ms. Calhoun, I hope she has, finds an opportunity at a charter school, private school if that's allowed, I'm not sure about the rules, and if the opportunity opens up next year, I hope that she would be able to return. But I will say, that is me, Katie Campbell, as a Board. I have shared my thoughts with Dr. Rendell, nothing that I'm saying tonight is a surprise to him. Any discussion? Poll roll call, please. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Okay, policy 5517 dash 01, is there anyone present who wishes to address that item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
It is the doc, it is the superintendent's role. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And so I won't be bringing forward a motion to ask you to do anything that is not in my lane.
Great.
Mr. Chair?
It's actually more not.
Ms. Wright, you want to go first? Next?
All right. I'm going to change gears. So, board member recognitions, that's where I'm going to focus right now. Obviously, we've had the start of school, so lots of good stuff happening. All of our kiddos are, are back in the classroom. Thank you so much to the GCR team to help coordinate this first day of school visits and coming out, taking pictures with us. That was a lot of fun. I selfishly went to my own child's school and I will say, Dr. Connors is off to a running start at Space Coast. She had the band going and cheerleaders there. It was good. The atmosphere was welcoming and fun and I am just very excited to see what she's going to do at Space Coast. Want to give a shout out, I mentioned this board to you before, that at the very beginning of this month, there's a special individual in the north end, Ms. Edna Wilson, who raised funds for the, this Kicks for Kids. And we had the opportunity to go and, and help and it was so successful that they had to do it for two weekends because there's 1,400 pairs of shoes, that brand new shoes, where the kids get to go into a shoe store, not just pick any pair of shoe that was donated, they get to go pick their own pair of shoes. And I just, it was a special event. I, I think it really speaks to the fact that that's what community looks like when everybody chips in to help. And, and I want to thank you, Edna, for, I know you worked a ton of hours and I know you helped fundraise and it's all for the love of the kids and I just cannot thank you enough for that. Ms. Campbell, you obviously already talked about bus patrol, so we are very excited about that. I want to thank all of our, our municipality shit, you know, officers that came and stood with us and said, hey, this is a unified front. We're going to do what it takes to make sure that our children are safe. And so I'm excited to make sure that that's one more step, that our kids are safe getting on and off of the bus. And then, other than that, one, obviously, we had our commissioner of education here in Brevard County, so very grateful for that visit. He got to see a lot of the good CTE stuff that's going on around our county and want to thank him for taking the time, the day, to come here and, and see all the amazing things that are happening in Brevard County. Other than that, I do not have anything else. Thank you.
Sue? Okay, you can pass it up.
Mr. Chair?
So, two things, or actually, three things. First two are positive. The third one is, is very important to our school district. First of all, I'd like to echo the comments about the GCR from the Mrs. Wright made. Most of you guys know that we all, each of us went to different schools on the first day of school and, you know, welcomed the kids back. And Allison Kimmy with, with GCR put together an amazing story on Facebook. If you haven't seen it, go to our BPS page and click Story. I believe it's the trick on how to do it. And I like it, but she did a really good job and it really highlighted, you know, all the schools, all the kids coming back to school. So, much appreciated and kudos to Allison Kimmy. Secondly, I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Rendell for his state of the school presentation. He put on at Vier Middle School, accentuate or accelerate Brevard was the host and he did a phenomenal job. I think everybody that walked, walked out of that auditorium was a believer in BPS and saw all the good things that were going on. So, good job on that, Dr. Rendell. And then, last but not least, I have, I'm going to bring up, obviously, my concerns with Melissa Calhoun. And just to answer a couple of things that you had mentioned, I think we've taken a simple matter and the district has made it complicated. I think it's a very simple matter. There was a rule violation. She admitted it. There was a discipline issue and we have gone above and beyond that. So, it's a very simple issue. My issue is not parental, you know, about parental rights. Parental rights were upheld. It is that we have gone above and beyond that. So I did make a few comments. We are staying in our lane, by the way, because, you know, yes, it says the superintendent's job to make personnel decisions, but when we have, we question that decision, it's our job to make sure that we, you know, it's not, not carte blanche. You know, we make sure that we, we question and, and make sure that we, the public, know our concerns and that's exactly what I'm doing now. I have great respect for Dr. Rendell. Before I make these comments, this is not a personal attack on anybody. I think Dr. Rendell has done a very good job. I disagree with him on this decision and on his judgment for this decision, but that doesn't take away that he's doing a lot of other great things. We got, we're in a school district for two, two years in a row. So, that should not be forgotten. He's, he is, he's done a very good job. But the district told Melissa Calhoun publicly in writing, quote, "Ms. Calhoun is welcome to apply to work at the district when the issue is resolved with the state," unquote. That was our word, no question. That was it. The state cleared her certificate to teach again. Despite being falsely accused of gender affirmation, made a scapegoat and facing intense media scrutiny and financial stress of not knowing if she's going to have a job, she remained dedicated, supporting her student success and immediately re... She supported her student's success and immediately reapplied as soon as she had the opportunity, had the opportunity to do so. Why did she do that after all that? All that she went through, all her family went through, she still, first thing she did as soon as she got cleared was reapply. Who in their right mind would reapply after everything that she went through?
All right. Let us talk up here. Thank you.
So, you know, I think that the reason why she reapplied is because it was driven by her love for teaching, for her students and for this district and that should not be ignored. I wish we had, every teacher had that kind of commitment to our district. And the term has been used, but tonight, a couple of times, but it was, I'm going to claim it because it was my original term, but now the goalposts have been moved and that's not fair. It is my belief that this district's word is our bond and we should act with honor. And when we say something, we should do it. If we break that trust, we lose the moral authority to lead and we betray the confidence of the 9,000 employees who rely on us to be consistent and fair and principled. Melissa Calhoun should not be a political pawn or a headline. She should be a Brevard public school teacher. And I do want to be clear because, you know, it always kind of, everybody's talking about parental rights. Parental rights were, were supported in this situation. There was an investigation. Mrs. Calhoun was very forthcoming. She said everything. The reason why she got in trouble is because she was honest. So, the question shouldn't be whether there was a violation. That is, that's not the question. There was a violation, that's, that's, that ship has sailed. The question is, now is, you know, do we keep our word or do we punish her, you know, an additional, a third time for, you know, we already gave her written reprimand, the state already levied their, their punishment and now we're going to go ahead and do a third thing by not rehiring her? To me, that's just, that's, that's triple jeopardy. Melissa Calhoun is a dedicated teacher who made a mistake, one without malicious intent. She's not a woke educator. When asked, she spoke the truth openly and honestly. She faced disciplinary action from both this district and the Florida Department of Education and did exactly what was asked of her. She did not hide, did not lie and did not make excuses. There was no defiance, no hidden agenda. Melissa simply called a student by the name she had known for years.